To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes first.
Minutes first.
And then you got everybody. Everybody look over the minutes. There's additions that you can make.
You'll have to do separate approvals for your regular minutes and that budget here.
You're just gonna have to jump in there.
Have to jump in there.
He can't sneak up. Really crinkle.
What's that? Big boxes?
I'm Cody Borasol. I generally buy them junior minutes when I bring them out.
We're if we're pushing it.
That's a justice question, I don't know. It's what he told me today. Cause I called him talking to him. And he said he was trying to get to me tomorrow, but he got to me today.
Unveiling, yeah.
Crinkly boxes.
In your own head, apparently.
Before I leave, I'll get a coffee.
I don't remember. You sure you know what I'm talking about?
I'm positive.
Why did we talk about what?
What about the year? I was like, you don't remember, we talked about?
Waiting for spring?
Do it with our town cleanup and doing an actual unveiling with Arcelliana for one of these people.
No, I don't remember talking about that, Cody.
We did.
What did you have when you were in the order?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
October eighth meeting minutes.
Cody makes a second, alright.
All in favor?
I will make a motion to approve the budget meeting minutes as well.
I'll second that.
This is gonna make everybody.
I know.
All in favor?
All in favor. Add to budget approval.
Alright.
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 In public comments, let's see. John?
Yep. Alright, mine's more of a question than a comment.
Okay.
I got something for you. When I bought Adrian's property, you know where that big rock thing is? Like the cellar or storm shelter, whatever? And fire hydrant I put there? That's a fourteen and a half foot section. I was gonna build a forty by sixty pole barn in the back there for storage and stuff, until I found out Rosedale still owns that fourteen and a half foot. So I'm asking the town to deed it over to me. Yeah, because it's got the fence on it, it's got a storm shelter in there, and there's a fire hydrant in front of it now, so it's no longer an alley, obviously. It's highlighted in yellow if you want to see it, it's just that little section. It's the very south end of the property between Murphy and mine. Evidently, at some point, it got dropped because she put a fence up, there was a tree there, you know what I mean? And now you've got the big hole in the ground with rocks around it. And then the fire hydrant got put right in front of it, so nobody's driving through there anyway. But what I want to do is just pick up that fourteen and a half foot. Here's the key, though. I only want it in mine and Nikki's name when we deed it. Cause that other's split into four. And I'm gonna keep the other two off of that.
Okay.
For obvious reasons. Don't put that in public comments.
I know.
It's alright.
A little too late.
Too late. But we'd just like to have a deed, if you're willing to surmise a property deed at an early moment.
So where is it? And it's fourteen by what?
Fourteen and a half feet. It runs from Main Street all the way back to Woods Alley. It used to be an alley at some point in time, way back when. And I looked up, Carol, none of those fourteen and a half feet are owned by the town anymore. They all went to the property owners throughout that. Cause I was thinking, okay, well, you had sections here and here and here, but it isn't anymore. And like I said, at some point, that fourteen and a half just got taken. But it never got deeded over. And it was a separate parcel, so I'm just asking to get that parcel. Yeah, I don't know when it happened, obviously. I mean, last time I had that property written all over it.
There should be a pony there.
That's before me!
If you wanna know, it's insignificant.
Yeah, I've always known it to look like that, so I don't know.
You should be able to have farm animals. Okay, any thoughts on? Should we check it out? You've been to the courthouse and everything?
Yes, I called him to verify that in fact it is a town.
I'd say.
There's no taxes on it, cause the town owns it, so there's nothing hanging out there.
Yeah, we literally just denied two last month. So, we just denied two last month. So, I'd say give it a month to see.
Two?
Didn't we have two last month that we looked at?
No, we just had one. The one we've been talking about forever.
Yeah, but that one's still usable alley, isn't it?
Yeah, you're not gonna use this alley. You got a fire hydrant in front of it, there's a big rock pile with a cellar to it, a storm shelter.
Well, let us explore it and we'll get back to you, how's that?
Yeah, cause what I was trying to do was, like I said, back corner, I wanted to put a forty by sixty building for, you know, working on stuff and storage and whatever. And that's when I started looking at it, and that's when I found that out, so. I assumed it was a part of the property. Obviously not my best moment there, but just remember, if you do, we'll work on the deed if you decide to. Alright, that's all we got. You thought I was gonna complain?
Yes, here.
I wanted to stop service at my house here in town.
Oh, okay. You don't have to discuss that during normal business hours?
Need wastewater only.
Okay.
So you guys have to make a motion on that.
Oh, I see.
Cause there's nothing to turn off.
Okay.
So. So we have to live better? Cause he's not living there. We've done that before for George Davidson's house when no one was living there and stuff, we just caused the building.
Okay.
It's a flatter. So you guys just need to make a motion on that.
Anybody wanna make a motion to stop service?
I'll make a motion to stop service on Jace's old house.
I'll second.
Are you selling that, are you putting it running or what?
I'll really note it on there. I had a conversation with the potential buyer today and it's not looking great.
Stop service on North Main.
Mom's house.
Jace, what's your address?
Two four three North Main.
Did you kick your mom out of her house?
Her plan is to build. She's talked about it many years.
Can you take a motion on that, Carol?
They already did. Barb and then.
All in favor?
Barb made a motion.
And then.
Diane has a second.
Diane has a second, okay, sorry.
My kid comes to say Judy, I was like, that's not right, though.
And then you guys are gonna explore the McGlinn property.
Yes.
It's not like that alley would give us more access than we already have, so.
No. Couldn't even use it anyway, cause it's all covered up. Like I said, you got a fire hydrant in front. And a fence all the way around.
All the way down the back, didn't it?
Yeah, all the way down the back and up to Murphy's.
Mark, you wanna give us your latest?
Quick update, looks like we're gonna be starting on the concrete next week, early next week. I've spoken to all but one of the residents along Main Street over there. We are doing the eight foot trail along with aprons out to the road for each driveway. Jeff Gooch agreed to redo, you might want to tear up.
So they're gonna tear that out?
Tear up the asphalt and the concrete all in front of Gooch's there and.
So mailboxes? Do those need moved, ones that are?
Nah, we spoke about that last time when we talked about the hydrants and the mailboxes needed, and they needed moved.
There's just a couple that look, but it's closed.
It's just down here. Towards middle. There's a couple that will have to come out and be relocated.
Do the property owners do that, or do they want us to do it? Does the post office need to be notified?
I asked the last time about the hydrants and the mailboxes, but if.
I think there's a couple street signs in one mailbox that will have to be moved.
You're gonna take the signs out?
Yep.
If it's the mailbox I think about, we'll probably have to take that one out.
I don't know if we'll be able to put it back in, said and done.
Well, right. I did talk to the post office if they could switch to a P O box at no cost, and he told me no. So, but then Andrew was like, but, so, I mean, I can confront that issue again, I don't know, can we move it closer?
I mean, they can move it down.
That way, yeah. That's what I'm wondering, if we can move it closer. Cause Lumis has have a P O box, so they don't have one out front, so.
The only thing you have to worry about with that mailbox is the homeowner's responsible for the approach going up to the mailbox. So as long as they can still drive up and deliver the mail. That's what you gotta worry about from the postal service.
And the hydrants and everything, that's all?
Hydrants gotta move, and appreciate Jace's help with all that. And also communicating with the homeowners along the street. I think we've got it worked out with everyone on where we're gonna cut back sidewalks so that everything tapers in nicely. And we'll take care of that. Up at the corner of Miller Street, we're actually gonna have to go back a ways with the sidewalk in order for drainage, so we're gonna take care of that as well to handle a corner up there.
Yeah, cause that pavement's a lot higher there, isn't it?
Well, the pavement's lower, there's a puddling spot there, but that should be taken care of once we get all the concrete in and all that. I've got work orders in with Sparklight, Duke Energy, and A T and T for the utility poles on the other, on the north side of Miller Street. But that's not gonna happen probably in the time, so this'll go up to Miller Street for now.
Okay.
And then we'll take care of the rest of it at some point. We're still working on getting concrete quotes for the abutments for the bridge and all that as well, but we'll do that. Two things, we talked about letters. One, authorizing permission to utilize the right of way of the town.
Yes, and I talked with the town attorney about that. And he sent me some other stuff, and he didn't send me that, so I reminded him that we need that, so I did talk to him about that.
I know, with the county commissioners where we've, we're using right of way, they just basically wrote a letter that said.
Right, yeah.
That it was okay to use for the trail because it's a public use trail and.
Right, and that's what Scott said, he said it was no problem. Like I said, he sent me something else, and he didn't send me that, though.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
How are we getting from the north side of Miller across to the other side? They had a complaint from a resident up there about people on his property. I tried several times to call him and could never get through to him.
Yeah, I've been threatened with calling the sheriff about four times now, looking at all that up there. But we own basically the eighty foot right of way, which, when you look at the town right of way, and then where our property comes in, we'll be on town right of way just as we, on the north side of Miller, and then we're on our property, which we acquired from Shop Meyer. So we own that entire triangle.
So when you go up the sidewalk, you're gonna go straight across the?
It goes straight north.
Is he aware of this?
Yes. I explained it to him. And I'm also going to get the surveyors out to put stakes on the property corners, on the lines, identifying the town right of way as well as our property line in that area. So we will cross and go straight north and then angle over and cross at the bridge, the old bridge location.
As long as he's aware of it and understands. Like I said, I tried to call him, I don't know, it went, said it was out of service and then it wouldn't go through, and I tried like four different times.
I've explained three or four times, yeah. And showed drawings and pictures and whatnot, but.
I thought Caleb owned that corner, but no.
Yeah, Jenkins' property comes down right to the corner, but then where the right of way goes back, if the sidewalk goes straight north, the town right of way is still right there, just for probably about ten or twelve feet.
And then it gets onto our property that we own.
So it'll be like sidewalk and then over the bridge and?
It'd be sidewalk straight for probably about forty or fifty feet north of Miller, and then it starts angling over and goes across where the old river bridge was. So it had a turn and angle over a little bit.
So as soon as I get that, Mark, I'll send that to you.
Okay. See, there was one other thing, the right of way. Oh, the maintenance. We talked about the maintenance at one time.
Yeah. I think you were gonna.
We said shared maintenance at the last meeting, yeah. Do you want some of the property attorney on that, too?
Yeah.
Okay, and Scott asked me that.
Something in writing, and then we will, we will confirm in writing.
Okay.
Just so that we're on the same page and we can communicate that to the D N O.
Yeah, Scott asked me about that and I couldn't remember what we said, so, alright, got it.
Anything else that we can help you with, or?
I think that's it, moving forward. Gentleman Pete Massa, I know Jace has met Pete, I believe, right? Yeah, and he's gonna be watching the project. He's a retired professional civil engineer I used to work with, and he's handling this piece of it down here primarily. So he'll be around and working with Brad on it. Looks like Brad's done pretty good coming to town with the rest of the sidewalks, so hopefully.
You weren't excited?
It all worked out. Yep, all worked out. And like I said, Jeff agreed to it, I had a call, I've gotta call in Jeff right now. I'm gonna work with him, just on the timing of everything. Obviously, you can't plan funerals. But at the same time, work with him as far as how it's gonna impact him and his business and everything. I've had a few conversations, so we'll work that out as well.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Max? I thought we'd have more people tonight, I just wanna call.
You know what, I forgot to post on the Facebook page today, I have been reminding everyone, and I was just really busy all day.
Okay, all business. Everybody look at that. Have any questions on that?
We've not received any other bids on the surplus property, I say we just table that till springtime.
Sounds like a.
It's kinda like a not really good time to sell anything like that. If that's okay with you guys.
Wood all still on there, the box blade?
And the mower.
And that mower.
Yeah. It's not the time of year to sell a mower.
You got Stormwater project, you got all that paperwork.
I did, I got the Stormwater closeout paperwork from Christie, everything is complete on her end. I have not heard from I F A on our bond, like our loan, Indiana Finance Authority, so I'm going to email Matt Martin this week and ask him if I, I've paid one small interest payment on it, but I haven't received like a continuing note of how much the bond is gonna be every month and all of that, so. So I asked Christie when she dropped that off, and she said, you haven't heard from him? And I said, no, she said, you need to text, email him then, so I'll email him this week.
Okay, murals?
So to go over this again, I don't know how some people heard.
I know, I'm not familiar at all.
Anyway, so we've got a mockup of what the design will be. She is getting panels ordered and special cut, if she can't get it special cut to the county shape, and she's gonna be squared, I think six by eight foot is the size. It may go on the nineteen hundred building now, we don't know.
He wants to know why so small. He would prefer it be bigger.
Because that one was the smaller one, and so, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, we got a grant for.
How big is it?
Six by eight foot.
Six by eight, okay, so it's not great.
It won't be huge, but it won't, I mean, by no means is tiny.
Position it closer to the front.
He liked the picture.
Yeah, the, Arcelliana suggested, since we're getting, it was past Bridge Fest, which was the original like plan, to kind of hold off on that one till spring. And I told them we do a town cleanup, it'd be good to do like a town cleanup day and maybe do an event that day with an unveiling, and they would like to be part of an unveiling ceremony for that, so.
I'd like to make a suggestion about this.
Yeah.
Since we're, we don't really have to use the nineteen hundred building. It would save money and time if we put it on one of the town buildings. I'm suggesting the building there by the Dollar General.
The water building?
The water building. What does, you could see it, all the kids would see it coming and going from school.
I don't have a vote in this, but I like, I did like that idea, too. I like the color, the colors in that mural I thought would look good on that building. That's my opinion.
I think if we can have it on Main Street and your boss likes it, I say we do it on Main Street, that way it's there and part of the trail, which was what the grant was for. So, cause yeah, that was. The trail was a beautification of the trail.
I was just trying to, since those panels were taking so long to get.
Oh, you were suggesting she paint on the building?
Yeah, just paint on the building.
Yeah, but I think the panels are already ordered.
Yeah, they're already ordered.
Okay.
And they were ordered specifically just in case we have to move it at any point.
Yeah.
How many panels, just one?
I think it's like four. And they'll connect together.
But it'll still just be six by eight?
Yeah.
Four six by eights, so.
No, I can say.
It'll be six foot by eight foot.
Just one?
Total, the total mural will be six foot by eight foot.
Okay, boy, we must understand. I can say, I had two comments on the mural on the town building that people commented tonight at the pantry, how much they liked it. They could see it as soon as they came over the hill, meaning when they came down. So they really liked the one on the building.
It's been very positive, I think everybody's been really positive about it.
Six by eight is almost that opening size right there.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty decent size.
Tall.
Well, if we could still put it on the old Red Lion Building on that corner.
Yeah, but you don't know what's gonna happen with that building.
That's what I mean, we could move it if we had done work down.
Yeah, I think we've got plenty of options to just figure out, yeah.
Yeah.
As far as him having input to what the design and stuff is? He was happy with the one I showed him.
Yeah, he and I talked about that one when he was in here, so.
Okay.
Sounds good to me. The gutters are already done, streetlights are already done.
Yeah, I did, oh, I sent you guys an email, I got my rebate check, two thousand ninety dollars.
Yeah. From Duke. Why did we wanna spend that on?
It just went to the general fund for now, we'll figure that later.
What can we buy?
I thought that's what we were gonna buy new doors for, or part of that.
Gotta get the quote first.
You don't have that yet?
I didn't think, I didn't think two things of it till this morning.
Yeah.
But I will have it by the end of the week, I made it.
We got the gutters done on the Marshall Building, and ours repaired here. You received the bill for the streetlights.
Yeah, I thought that, but that.
I think we talked about that, how much of a savings that was.
Yes.
Okay, the town hall doors are still, are you having any luck with that, Ken?
Nope, I didn't think one thing about it till this morning.
Okay.
But I'll have it by the end of the week.
The drainage break, I guess John Bennett has said he will not work on that.
So I've had three people, including John Bennett, look at it. So gotta, they're all have the same concern, you know, about that backside of. So Orman now wants to meet the guy out on Rio Grande. He's actually looked at it a couple times, but he wants to meet with me, you. Actually, he's got, he just called a couple days ago, he's got other ideas on how to fix it now.
Me and Brad Thompson.
What's that?
I looked at it with Brad Thompson as well, we can talk about that later.
Okay. Yeah. So I think, yeah, there was concerns also just about whatever happens with that ditch, you know, with the gas station, if they do whatevers. But if they raise it up the way it should, it's gonna pop tires going across it.
Yeah.
So, we're still working on it, so we're gonna have, it sounds like two meetings here, so. I know John was saying that that was just put in as temporary, you know, that for at that time.
About forty years ago?
No, it's not been that long ago, but I don't recall it being a temporary fix.
Still, yeah, but it's just a bad scenario. Well, part of it also has to do with those curbs so low.
I thought there was an old thing underneath there.
I don't know what's on that there, I don't know where it goes.
Unless you get new curbs, and then it'll solve the whole problem really quick.
Signs have been ordered, and once the trail and everything's done, Jace will have that drill, so he can drill in and put the new signs in.
I have noticed since, had that conversation with him, they've actually been parking back.
Yeah.
And it has helped tremendously.
It's been really nice.
It's gonna be nicer when it gets moved back another car length.
He has gone ahead and done that, and then he's still concerned about that corner.
I didn't, he talked to me about that, but it was on the phone, I don't, I went by and looked at it, I don't know what his concern is, what is this concern?
It's all breaking apart.
Well, he wants it.
I think he's just wanting new sidewalk where, and like slope down and then.
He kept stressing the slope with the A D A, but, I mean.
Yeah, it needs to be wheelchair accessible.
There's really nothing there, I don't understand the slope issue either.
I don't understand, he was stuck on the slope and A D A part. Not really stuck, we were just talking, he was just emphasizing it.
I think he just means it needs like a good rumble strip or something.
I didn't take that out of the conversation, but I, I don't know. Maybe I'll just, we'll just go meet with him and have him show us.
I think that's probably the best idea, Ken.
Probably need somebody that's familiar with the A D A to look at it and state what it would need. I mean, Brad could probably tell us what.
Yeah, and I could, I mean, I deal with that, but I don't understand what his question is.
He wants to do sidewalk, that's, that's what it is.
But only, but only like three feet.
Well, this is bad thing. Let me say this, though, I think, I think that, so when, when that valve was leaking really bad there, he was really concerned that we were going to flood his building. So I, and I said.
That was further down by the post office?
No, but it was leaking right here on the corner, yeah. And he kept, he, cause he messaged me and was like, Natalie, is this gonna flood my building? And I was like, has your building ever flooded before? And he said one time in like one of the major storms we've had in like the last five or six years, he had water like come in the door, whatever. And I was like, well, it's, it's not getting worse, it's like the same flow rate. So I said, we'll just have to watch it, but there's really nothing we can do till we fix it. And it never did go that far, but I'm wondering if that's more when you're talking about the slope, Ken? If that has something to do with it as well?
Yeah, I just.
So.
It was a cool conversation, he was just, he was talking about it, I just couldn't understand what he was.
It is way better, though, that they have been parking back.
Yeah, that is better. I haven't been concerned with, we didn't know how.
I'm still up for the yellow line, so.
Underneath the road.
Cause I could have told Ken, I think they should have yellow line.
Oh, I don't think, that's obvious.
I'm still up for the yellow line.
Whatever happened, did we ever, over there by Miller and Main, you know, they were concerned about that one being needed?
I put millings on it.
What's that?
I did put road patch on it.
Did you? Cause I had seen it, I was just, had that thought, was sitting there.
Are you talking about what Jerry Lindville was concerned about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I fixed it the best I could.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tractor was next.
Yeah.
Okay.
Natalie's gonna give us update on that.
Okay, so, um, our settlement on the tractor is fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. And that's less our one thousand dollar deductible. Um, I've been awaiting a check, and I did not receive one, so I emailed back to the, the guy, and he's like, oh, I forgot to send you the bill of sale. So I signed the bill of sales, so we've officially sold the tractor and land planer to the insurance company, and they're sending me a check. In the meantime, our replacement cost is up to thirty one thousand eight seventy four. Um. John Deere quoted us on the equivalent of the current model equivalent of the tractor that we have, so you guys, this is a quote that they gave us. And it's thirty thousand six ninety six, I had Dane Welker do a quote for us on a Kubota. And um, Nick sent this to me today, and it's, it's an, it's another thirty three horse tractor. But it's a little bit, all I know is that Justin said. The chassis is bigger than the John Deere one, but the horsepower is the same. So he said it just depends on what you're wanting, but this quote is for thirty three three, so this is actually higher than this one. So these are just ballparks, Jace is not, he's not been complaining, but he does miss his tractor.
Yeah.
Um, and he, I mean, we use it a lot, more than we realize, I think probably. And so, I mean, if anybody else wants to get tractor, I mean, I'm not a tractor quoter, I just. The John Deere one, our salesperson Elizabeth there, I told her what the old model was, she just quoted the equivalent, you went and looked at it.
I did.
Mm-hmm, um, so, and we know we've been at Kubota yet, but Kubota did sell us, Dane Welker did sell us the land planer. So we have dealt with them before and they were good too, so we just, this is what we have in quotes, I do not have the tractor money yet. But I've signed off on everything from him to get it, so. Anyone have any tractor thoughts? Ken, did you, did you get any information on this model tractor? Okay. So.
I mean, what do you think?
I will say, I think we, I have nothing against Kubota, but my thought with us buying a John Deere mower. Is gonna be the same with buying a John Deere tractor, HW is right there in Rockville, it's close, it's convenient.
It's also cheaper, so.
Well, it is cheaper, but they're not going anywhere, they're all certified mechanics, if anything goes wrong. It's sixteen seventeen mile up the road.
I can appreciate that too, Jason, it is nice, having the service right there is nice.
Um, and actually. Chassis wise, it is a smaller tractor, smaller bucket, but horsepower wise, the John Deere's a thirty eight horse, you said that one's thirty three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I would say John Deere is the route to go.
And I mean, just price alone makes sense that we would go with John Deere with two thousand dollars cheaper and. It's a quote from the company, the, a model that was pretty much stolen, so.
Yeah, um, she gave us some pretty good discounts on here too, voted in, gave us any discounts, thanks Nick.
So do you guys wanna vote on it then, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I'll make a motion to approve purchasing the John Deere once we get the money and stuff.
I'll second it, whoever knows.
Where would the uh, extra funds come from?
Well, so I would just have to pay it and then they'll reimburse me. So, I just need to figure out how to like do the accounting on it, and we got plenty of money in our general fund to float that. But, um, he said, as soon as you send me a bill of sale. For your new purchase, as long as it's of like kind and quality, and I did clarify with him that he was talking about the horsepower and whatnot. Um, then Nelson missed the reimbursement for up to thirty one thousand, cause we already have the fourteen six, so we just have to put out another fifteen.
Oh, so. The insurance is covering the entire thing.
The insurance is covering it.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, they, but they just reimburse me.
Was originally.
I have to pay for it and then they'll reimburse me for the other part.
Threw me off, I was like, oh, so they're giving us fourteen thousand.
That's just for our tractor, yeah, and then we can use that to purchase the new one.
Got you.
When they're a deductible.
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars, yeah.
We get the thirty thousand dollar tractor for a thousand dollars, okay.
Ken said that in the last couple meetings ago, for a thousand dollars new tractor, let's do it.
Yeah.
Well, and that's how I thought it was, and then the fourteen thousand threw me off, so.
And winter's coming, I think Jason's his tractor.
The tractor's found, the insurance company will.
They'll own it, so they can have it.
Is there any news on that?
Nope, everything we had, and everything the sheriff's department had, we followed up, everything we had.
Yeah. No sign of that. Okay. All right, can you hear the information, the civic center's gonna have a band.
That was last month.
Oh, that was last month, but they've been talking about the parade, they're gonna have.
Oh, they're gonna have the Christmas parade, yes.
And I think they're doing smores of that after that too.
Maybe, mm-hmm, I think that is December the seventh, maybe, let me look. Um.
And then the, the last day for the pantry is uh, December seventeenth, I believe.
The fourteenth and then the seventeenth, if there's anything left over, they'll be extending it to the seventeenth.
Yeah, so December seventh is the Christmas parade in town, the pantry closes. The fourteenth or seventeenth.
So did we get any more information about the tur- pot shop turkey trial?
I did not, I was gonna message her, I do wanna say this about the pantry, um, I did ask Evan what his plans were. Concerning everything that's next door, and he, he wanted me to float this to you guys. Um, and he said he mentioned this to Barb too, so. This is his message to me, if the town doesn't oppose, I'd like to empty out food and product wise, clean the entire pantry. Unplug all units and the AC and heating unit and leave things for a little bit. It looks like Catholic Charities is going to work with me on a mobile monthly pantry, and depending upon how that goes, we may need some of the shelving, et cetera. The pantry can also go into a dormant nonprofit status for a while, and in the event someone wanted to take it. And potentially open up again, the equipment would be available. So, he says he's gonna sell the trailer and the storage barn, which is sitting over on Harrison's lot, so, I don't know how you guys feel about that. About him leaving it for a while, I mean, if you wanna put a timeframe on it, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just floating back, I'm just the messenger on the pantry stuff, so. And I think that. Going forward, if, I don't know if there's anyone interested in taking it over, a couple people have asked me about it, I don't know, has Evan mentioned anything, Barb?
No.
Okay, I had somebody contact me about it, and I sent them to Evan, but, um. I think that it maybe need to be done a little bit differently going forward, I don't think that we could have known five years ago when it started. When we had like two refrigerators and some tables, but now the town hall electric bill is probably triple.
Yeah.
What it was.
Which, and we've said two years in a row that we're gonna start charging.
Right, and we've, we've said that, and we haven't, but I do think going forward, if someone else did want to, I think we'd have to. Lock things a little bit differently, and we have to, so, I do, as soon as Evan is done, I do wanna change the locks on the door out there. Um. I have a list of everyone who's had a key.
I did speak to Evan about that, he has a list also.
Yeah.
Which, and I mean, realistically, we're also getting a new door here, so. It's kind of just a good idea to just change all the building's locks at the same time.
So just, it would just be not, just for clean, this and that, you know. So you guys can think about that, nobody has to make a decision on that right now, obviously, but that's just, that was his thought.
Concern I have with that is, I'm sure that could get really stinky. Really quickly if they are not done correctly, cause that's a lot of refrigerators and.
I mean, you just have to leave all the doors open.
Yeah.
I mean, bottom line, so everything dries out really well, but, but that's, that's the thought right now, so.
Now we got.
Yeah.
A little tug.
You got some more time, so.
So, talk to Mr. Pike Horn, see if he's still doing that.
My old messenger, I was gonna message earlier, I didn't, um, you guys do need to take action on the salary ordinance, I saw that earlier. On how you wanna handle that, um, going into twenty twenty five. Um. It has to be passed by the end of the year, so you pretty much need to do a first reading tonight. Unless you know you're all gonna be here next month, and then you can do your first reading and your second reading at the same time, but.
That's why we're here.
So you don't have to read that, you just need to talk about if you're gonna increase anyone's pay.
Okay.
I gave everyone another copy of it, so.
And last year, we just increased everybody by what?
It's three percent, we typically do. I mean, you can do whatever, but three percent is definitely what we do. So. We.
Deputy Marshal.
Andrea.
Water operator. Can I include Gary?
So, yes.
Yeah, the only one that probably isn't correct on here would be Jace's, correct?
Jace is correct on here.
Oh, you've changed it on here.
Said that was Jace's twenty, you were gonna keep that for next year too. That's the way I understood it.
Right.
So. So that's your water operator, your marshal, your deputy town marshal, myself, Andrea, um. But then you can re- you can raise yourselves too, I mean.
Well, Cody mentioned that.
But I don't, you know, I just need to kind of realign that budget wise, so, it's kinda stinky to do your budget first. And then your salary ordinance, but I can adjust it as you need, so.
No, I'd say we stick to that three percent.
Yeah, I think everything.
Yeah. And then, we'll definitely start next time.
Um, you need to, you need to make a motion tonight.
Okay.
And then I can read you this with numbers, and then you can have your second reading next month.
Okay.
Unless that's not what you wanna do, so. I gave this to you guys a few months ago, we just have been busy.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, I don't know, what we talked about. What do you guys think? Same as usual?
Sounds good to me. So you're saying that's three percent for everybody but Jace?
Yeah, Jace got a raise, um, so.
I have a question. I did get a raise.
You did.
Do I get a cost of living at any point, or?
Well, next year you, you'll get what, everybody else gets probably?
December.
Yeah. But you just, you got your Christmas early.
New Christmas, gee.
Is that okay with you?
Oh, I have a choice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll buy you a ham or something.
Yeah, get two turkeys a year.
And if that wasn't the way it was, that's how I understood it to be.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
I just, you know, if we, we gave you that in what, in October? September?
I can't remember when that happened.
I don't remember.
I think it was the first meeting I came to, I wonder if I remember right, not that I was here, but over there.
Oh, when you were watching, maybe, yeah, a couple months ago. And you can adjust this throughout the year, you can go back and amend your salary ordinance throughout the year in the same ma- that's how we did Jace's raise.
We just had to have an extra meeting.
Yeah, so if you decide you wanna change something going throughout it, you can, so.
So we need a motion to keep it as it is, or what?
Or to add the three percent.
Or add three percent.
Add the standard three percent to everybody's, it's.
Three percent overall, except for our, um.
Board.
The street superintendent and the board, yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Three percent overall, except for.
Like you're at second?
I'll second, okay.
Motion for three percent overall, except for. The board and Jace, right. Okay. I do.
Oh, you gotta take a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do I see, do I hear all ayes?
Second.
Yeah. Motion passed.
Still have to say.
Still have to vote aye.
Oh, wow.
Alright, here's a, that's.
Actually, second to motion.
Okay, you want the department?
Or do you wanna go on?
Yeah, I'll throw things away.
You can, you can do that in the street department. Water sewer, water sewer, Diane has a report.
Money nine penalty, six tags, no shut offs.
Oh, we also, we do have other new business, the water.
Yeah, that, I figured we'd do that in, I figured we'd do that in department.
Okay, perfect.
Um, you, the other new business is we need a furnace over there, Doug Andrews did renew the quote for thirty two hundred dollars. It's still good, um, I don't think we're gonna get a cheaper one. But, we need a furnace, so, I just need a, somebody to make a motion for us to get.
I'll make a motion to.
Andrews has done all of our heating and cooling for years.
Okay.
Cody's the first.
Cody's the first, do I hear a second on getting the furnace for the water building?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
I presented you guys with an ordinance, um, to raise the water rates ten percent. Um, it was just a simple ten percent raise, you guys, and you don't have to, to raise it this, you don't have to, we, we do need to raise it. Because we, while we did get an influx of cash from the water bond closeouts, um. And we are saving money every month, the rate is still substantially low, and we have to look to the future, we haven't raised it in a couple years. I mean, overall, it's, you know, the twenty seven, twenty nine rate. That's your, that was your base rate before, we're going up to thirty, whatever.
Well, and I mean, the math showed we needed to be at a seventeen percent increase, so a ten percent increase is. Quite fair.
Yeah, so, that's what it is, um, passing a rate ordinance is a little bit more complicated. You can read it tonight, but then it's gotta be advertised, but then you don't have to take action on it. I mean, you can table it till next month, whatever you wanna do, it does take a couple meetings to pass a rate ordinance. But it does, I, I do think it does need to be done, I will tell you this. That after closing out the water bonds, I received two checks, the first one was for twenty six thousand two fifty four ninety five. And then I received another ten thousand five seventy three nineteen, so, your water utility operating fund. Went from thirty five thousand last month, or thirty nine thousand last month, up to eighty one thousand now. So, we are doing good, um, but you will also find on your bills, where I did just order thirty meters and that's eight thousand dollars. So, this meter replacement is.
Also, be what, two hundred more?
Yes, we, we still need more than two hundred, I think this will put us at a hundred and thirty, Jace?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think this will put us at a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty, pretty close.
Let me say, I was thinking maybe one twenty, cause I thought you told me ninety were.
Well, we had ten more, we had ten more that we were hanging on to, and then we just got thirty more.
So it should be one thirty then.
I think it'll put us at one thirty, we have three sixty, so, um.
So we literally have a third, pretty much.
That's what, and the goal was to be a third done this year, the goal was to do it in three years. I don't think we're really gonna last for three, I think that next year is gonna be double that on them.
We lose between ten and fifteen a month.
So.
Yeah.
I think.
So.
Springtime, it's, we give it as hard as we can, but.
I think we have to, so, and I have been splitting the meters out of water and sewer. Because you can't build sewer without water, but I'm not splitting this big order I just did out of there. Um, sewer actually probably needs, those rates actually need to be examined as well, but let's just do one at a time.
Yeah, cause you help.
Unless you guys wanna make everyone mad all at once, and that can be done too.
Realistically.
But.
People are gonna be mad on both, there's nothing we can do about it.
I mean, we're saving our four thousand dollars a month in the. I mean, we're saving our four thousand dollars a month in the bond and we've gotten this influx of cash, so. I feel pretty confident that we can get it done, it's just, you know, we're getting to the cold weather now too, so. How many, have you put any of those new ones in yet, Jace?
Ten.
What?
Ten.
Ten, okay.
So do you want me to read this?
You can, if that's what you guys wanna, if you guys wanna get it going, is there anyone who wanna discuss it, anybody wanna, have any other thoughts?
We've been discussing it for four years now.
Yeah.
How do you, how, what, how do you notify everybody, you just send a letter, right?
You don't send a, a letter.
Oh.
You don't really have to notify them, um, there will be a, there'll be a thing in the newspaper. That's your requirement for advertisement by the state is the newspaper, which I know no one reads and no one sees, but that's that. And then, I mean, there's really no, you don't really notify them. I mean, we're not governed by the I U R C, the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. So they may have to, like your larger utilities like Duke and whatnot, I don't think they notify either though, honestly.
No, they don't, they just raise them.
I always get something telling me that my bill's going up before it goes up, for Duke.
Oh, for Duke?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I never pay attention.
Oh, yeah.
It just always goes up, so.
I, I pay so many of them, I guess I never really see anything like that.
They had a big raise.
Um.
It was on TV, I know.
Yeah, um, so no, we've never in the past, Diane, we've never actually really know, I mean, everything's been so small. Like little raises that probably your average water customer, your average water wastewater customer would barely notice. The people that will notice are your water only customers, because a lot of them are minimum bill payers.
Yeah.
And then they'll just call and say, hey, did the rates raise? Yes, they did, oh, okay, no, I mean, nobody really complains.
I was gonna say, but they haven't raised this much though, have they?
Um, I think the most we've ever done is five.
Yeah.
Correct, but it was supposed to raise in twenty twenty at five percent, and then twenty twenty two at five percent.
Yeah.
And then again this year at five percent, so.
Yeah, we were supposed to incrementally do it, so, yeah.
Well, yeah, COVID and then, we've talked about it and some studies twice. And every time we, it's like, it really needs to be like at least a seventeen to twenty two percent increase, but.
Well, with the pain off of the body, it's, it's, we're able to not to save quite a bit, yeah.
Cody, you wanna read this since you're top louder than me?
Yeah, I can. Okay, amending water rates and changes, whereas it has been determined that by Rosedale Town Council that the existing rates are inadequate to fund. Operations of the waterworks and therefore should be amended amended and modified as provided for the ordinance. Now therefore be it ori- ori- ordained by the council of towns Rosedale, Indiana follows. The rates and charges for use and service rendered by the waterworks shall be charged in an amount based upon a fee scheduled. Shown appendix A, the ordinance shall go into effect with the water bills and issued by customers in February of twenty twenty five. Passed on the first reading of the twelfth day of November twenty twenty four, um. And adopted on second reading of, which would be in December, so we're amending that we're increasing it by ten percent.
Um, this is gonna be twenty twenty five dash three. How about that? So I'll go for it with Scott, that's a first read, so there's no need to sign or anything, I'll go for it with Scott on the rest of the. It'll have to have a public hearing and that kind of stuff, so, yeah.
And just beyond the like up and up, do we wanna put like a copy of a ten percent ordinance increase in the. Post office as well, or? Okay, or is there a way to print it on the next?
Well, we have that little teeny tiny space on there.
Yeah.
Um, but since we're not going up until February, we wouldn't wanna do that until we got like to the January bill, maybe. We have like this really limited amount of characters, Andrea and I have to get creative sometimes, but yeah.
Stamp, buy a five dollar stamp on Vista Print.
Oh, and stamp it?
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good idea too, so. Um, so who made the motion?
I'll make a motion too.
Do we have a second?
Free water.
Raising timber step.
We have a second on the water rate increase.
I'll second.
Had they dropped it once?
Now take your vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the motion, okay.
Motion passed.
It's like the hardest thing to do.
It is.
As a council member and, you know, it, I mean, I remember we have to do it, so.
One time that I've been on the board.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you really?
And I've been on here for seven years.
We did the, the wastewater, the wastewater increase when we did the wastewater improvements in two thousand sixteen. I don't know, were you on the council then, Ken?
Oh, yeah.
It was fifty three percent.
Oh, yeah.
The wastewater rate was a fifty three percent increase because that is what the state board of accounts required us and I F A in order to fund the project. Which was one point two million dollars. And honestly, I can only remember maybe two people coming in.
Mine were all more the older crowd, you know, when I was out and about.
Right, out and about, you heard about it, but I can remember.
Yeah, come in the meetings, it wasn't bad, but it was.
The meetings were, I can remember like one meeting where somebody had a concern about it and everything, and it's, it's dumb. And then, we all have to pay it too.
I think it might be a good idea to put something in the post office.
If you gave them a heads up, you know, more so.
They would appreciate it.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
I know, I would appreciate having a heads up.
Yeah, just like the Duke thing.
You can get in this town, so, you know.
Did it have any wastewater issues?
No.
No, I don't think so, he says the renewing the permit, that's it, so.
Are you gonna put it on Facebook, turn it over to Facebook page, take away comments?
Yeah, take away comments.
I'm just saying.
I, I take away comments on most of the things I post, so.
I, I just think it reaches a lot of people that way.
Yeah, well, I've seen people comment on there too, there's not, not everybody has Facebook, so why don't you post something at the post office?
Right, so, yeah, when we get closer to, we can do something, for sure.
And honestly, Bucks would probably let us put something on their door too.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Can we just talk about how nice?
Oh.
Bucks is and how great those guys are that run it.
They are really fair and nice guys.
Anything you want, they're, they will get for you, they're so.
They are very, I like them.
What, was there something new I missed?
Well, you got alcohol now, we got.
We'll get alcohol in there.
Square donuts in there almost every morning.
They have alcohol?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Actually, I've just seen it yesterday.
Just like within the last week.
Like just beer, or are we talking?
No, they've got liquor, cause.
And it's like the shop box, whatever you call it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I've seen little fireball shots in there.
I had like three times.
Which I think it's, that's the, nothing can be cold, I'm guessing, but.
No, I got that whole freezer.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't even see that, so.
Yeah.
A guy of tours.
Think it's nice having gas twenty four seven if you need it.
Yeah.
Um, but you can go and continue your department reports, where you guys at?
Street.
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 Ken's got the PAMP. I know you really haven't had a chance to look at it, Ken.
Uh, no.
But, there's, so.
What did you say?
This is our pavement asset management plan, the state makes us do this, we used to have to do it every three years, now we have to do it every year. So you have to update your PAMP and you have to upload it into the L TAP system. Local technical application program, I don't know, it's another login I have to remember, um. You cannot apply for community crossings grants if you do not have a current PAMP. So you have to update it every year if you plan to apply, so this was a minor update for us. It basically goes back in and the, the page that Ken has open right now is the important page, it just shows the condition of our streets. Based upon the pavement rating program, the Pazer rating program, and I've learned a lot of acronyms. And, um, so we just need approval to accept it and then, um, H W C and I will upload it.
And I'm sure we updated the, with the new sidewalk project before that.
Nah, the new sidewalk project was not done when they did that, now we'll go on that, now we'll go on our ADA plan.
That's what, that's what we did, okay. Got you. I was thinking that's what that was. Well, I was just thinking, I was like, okay, so do we need to change with the new ramps and sidewalks we just put in?
We have the now and upstate.
Literally, that'll be all we need to go for. I'm just showing that we just updated a bunch of sidewalks and.
Yeah.
So, perfect.
That'd be good.
Cause yeah, that'll, that was the other part of getting community crossings, wasn't it?
This is right, right about here is like, should be a dark red, where that speed bump is.
Well, and the interesting thing about that is, um, our last main street project, originally when I drove main street with, um. Our, we had a different engineer, we had a guy named Brian and his last name is escaping me right now, but he and I drove it and he and I felt like. The last time they did a heavy rating on it, that they, that they were wrong, that it was worse than they thought. So it's probably fair, Diane, to say it might be a little bit worse than you think, so.
So is that next on the list, that, that side of town?
Um.
Yeah, you can see it, it's basically.
You can, so community crossings has changed over the years and the way it started out is you had to do your worst roads first.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you no longer have to do your worst roads first.
Yeah.
So you don't have to do your worst roads first, because honestly, that side of Main was not our worst road. They changed it and everyone has to access that road to get in and out of town, so if it's a, a really heavily traveled road, even if it's not your worst road. They'll definitely consider it, um, since you're just learning, Diane, when you bid for community crossings, um.
It's a pain in the butt.
It's, it is a lot of work, but you can't change it. Like, you know, our bids were way under this time, which we got a contractor that will never use again, because we were disappointed in that. But like, he was a hundred thousand dollars under our estimates and our, and your, your award from community crossing is for your estimate. So you can't change it and you just, so you have all this money sitting there and you're thinking, oh, we wanted three hundred thousand dollars. We can't use it all, cause our estimate was for one ninety or whatever, you can't change it and add a bunch of streets. So once you bid for those streets, that's it, so. But we don't ever have to use that contractor again and that says that since we had a bad experience, we don't going forward.
He wasn't, so.
It was D C construction on a Pendleton, so. But yeah, that's our.
I thought we, we did Miller Street.
We haven't done anything on Miller. No.
Hey Diane, gone forward.
We got a lot of red norms on here.
That's for the president, you're good luck.
Yes, we do have a lot of red and orange, so, so you just need approval to approve that plan and then, and most approve the plan and then we can get it filed.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
She'll be happy, cause she's been really stressed out about getting that job.
Um, any news on the park?
Nothing I know of.
Kids are playing over there.
Kids are playing over there.
I haven't seen any bodies or anything, so.
Baseball mitts in my possession that were left in there.
Oh, okay.
Bring them here and put them on Facebook and.
Okay.
I didn't want dogs getting them and chewing them up, so.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, we talked about the.
Oh, you're two, uh, fire department now, unless you have more park stuff.
Well, are you gonna talk about the? Basketball.
Uh, no, because we need to get a better grasp on what we need done in the basketball court, we need to go over there and measure.
Alright.
Okay, so.
So fire, we've got one structure, two brush, one alarm, seven medical. One motor vehicle accident.
We don't know.
So what was that?
And then, total. Uh, fireman's breakfast.
Sunday.
Okay, Sunday, and what's that, uh, seventeenth?
Yeah, third Sunday. Then we'll be skipping December.
Why?
Cause we don't have enough people putting in applications to help.
Oh, okay.
What if you just get volunteers that aren't on the department to help?
Well, unfortunate part of that is it's not consistent enough. And it's to help the burnout on the people that are on the park.
Well, should recruit some of the high school students.
You could also recruit some pantry people that are, they're longer gonna have pantry.
Don't you have to be a fireman five years?
Do certain things, to work in the kitchen and to take money, you have to be a fireman.
Okay.
Well, I shouldn't say, no, you don't have to be a fireman. He should be over eighteen.
You should ask like the honor society or something at Riverton, if they would.
Again, finding that, finding those volunteers every month consistently for nine months is.
Yeah.
Is rough, so.
Okay.
We decided to skip a couple.
Still nine dollars, uh, for now?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Raise it this year.
I'm gonna go into police and we'll go into cemetery after, uh, police got five warnings.
And laundry list of stuff this month.
Yeah. Six ordinance violations, one welfare check, one trespass, one theft auto, one suspicious vehicle, one speeding vehicle. One property dispute, one neighbor problem, three investigation follow-ups, one information, one fall, one criminal mischief, one burglary. Two animal complaints, one accident, personal injury, four traffic stops. Jesus.
I didn't know you could have a neighbor problem charged.
We had big balloons this last month, didn't we?
Yes.
Some of that stuff is helping the county.
Stay away.
Give them all tickets next time.
Except the hole in front of my house, on the road.
Your ordinance violations, the clean up your yard letters, I hand delivered three of those.
Okay.
Cool.
There was two others that were posted on the property and taking pictures of, so it's kinda. Kind of in your court now, what do you wanna do with them?
They go Scott.
Anybody help, has anybody worked on, brought her?
The one on Miller Street, they did get rid of the car, the one silver car in the driveway.
Yeah.
Uh, then they had a goat and I've talked to him about that and then I got ripped through on Facebook about a horrible person I was.
But now it's disappeared, so.
Way back in the beginning of the, like.
I don't see him either.
Cleanup day, wasn't it, that we talked to them?
Well, it was on her page, it wasn't on that page.
No, this is a different goat.
This is a different goat.
Oh, I was gonna say, the one over there, I thought, okay.
Those goats were gone, I talked to them.
Say, they're still there?
Another goat, I just talked to them and then right after I talked to them, that's when I got. I've had multiple people tell me that I'm such a horrible person, so.
I do not believe the house on Sinclair is, it's still under door.
It was last riding route, cause I drove by there purposely looked.
I do believe that the house, um, on main street, at that end of town. That they, she has done a better job.
She's tried, she did move the red pickups there, she did move some stuff around.
And she has made some effort.
Correct, the one over here on east street.
Has made west street.
She really don't like me.
She does not.
And she, they have not done anything to the yard.
Right.
The rental house next door actually ran into a lady there, they were, she was inside, they were gonna work on the inside of the house and she said they would have people back to mow it later, which they did.
Yeah, that's Berkshire, right, yeah, they've.
Uh, the other one on Old Lane, I don't think they've done much.
I have not noticed that they've done much either, I actually drove down there the other day, so, so let me. Let me talk, I'll email Scott about this and I'll copy you on it and then we'll go.
John, what was it that you brought up earlier?
Steven's property.
Oh.
Oh, the one next to his house owns, yeah.
Yeah.
Problem is you can't see it from the fence, the fence is in the way.
Yeah, but you said, you said there's animals in it now.
Ossums, raccoons, cats, I mean, I'm getting everything, I'll live trap for raccoons, take them out to the bridge and let them go.
Do you got a fence in between?
No, unfortunately I do not.
So there's a big fence, but you own half of that and then the other.
So where that semi trailer is sitting there, if you split that semi trailer in half and go east, he owns that part and then I'm on the west side of it. But he's, you know, that back end.
That's another one, probably, I'm gonna need Scott's help on that one, so I don't know what to do with that.
That's another one, probably, I'm gonna need Scott's help on that one, so I don't know what to do with that.
Yeah.
There'd be an inside the fence and everything.
Obviously we keep ours low, but he don't.
It's still, it was my understanding from going to court years ago on it. Yes, it's, it's hidden from public view, but it's still a health code violation.
It's a nuisance, correct, cuz of the animals.
So yes, that's what I was told.
But didn't we take stuff out?
And that's another one of them where.
We did take stuff out of the fence.
Stuff out of the fence at that time too, so.
We got a dumpster and took stuff out of the fence. No, it's not, it's not being sold.
Okay, that's not.
So John and Glenn owns the house.
I got the house in the garage.
In the garage and then there's another parcel, yeah, there's another parcel.
It's a corner south.
You're talking about, you're talking about Rick Triumphant House, yes, and that has it, that has sold.
Yeah, just go across the street back this way, Cody, and that's the house we're talking about, the white and black.
I talked to her a couple of days ago. Uh, guy had transferred on the line.
I sent you guys out there today.
Yeah, I got that house and the garage.
And she did go out.
Okay.
And then that semi trailer.
Mow most of it after I talked to her.
That way is his, I've got semi trailer that way.
Okay.
So are they gonna try to fix that up?
Tryons?
I don't think there's any fixing.
No, she told me eventually they're gonna try to tear that down, I asked her to clean the yard up a little bit and I said the house is kind of irreparable. Nothing's irreparable, I mean, you throw enough time and enough money at it, you could fix it, but.
Oh, yeah.
It economically it would be a bad move.
Looks like it's about done.
When I talked to her, she said it was their intention to try to get the garage down and the shed down before the end of the year. And then they were going to go through the house and clean it all out and really assess the situation, that's what she told me.
Well, no other west, east side of that house are in a hole if they're in the roof.
Right, so that, I think there's like an addition on it or something, I don't, I don't know.
But the one over here on East Street, they're not trying to do anything.
No.
So.
They're just gonna tear it down.
Who bought it? Uh, the neighbor.
Oh.
Yeah, um, the one on East Street.
No, the one over here on East Street is the one.
That, this is West Street.
Oh.
Oh, West Street.
I.
You're confusing me with East Street, yes.
But the one over here.
Next to Brookshire.
Correct, they're not doing anything, they've been warned, I've handled, I've hand delivered the last letter and all.
Are they renters or they?
No, they.
No, they own that.
That's a Scott thing then.
Yeah, that's one of them that's in the file, call me, oh, you know.
What about the camper situation?
Uh, I stopped there and talked to those people too and. I was told they were just visiting, they said you can't visit for three months, the town has an ordinance against living in campers.
What is it, over so many days?
I mean.
I don't even know if it specifies days in there, does it?
Yeah, it just said you can't live in, I have to read it again, but I, I don't think it said days, but.
I don't think it says days, but.
I mean, if you're visiting or staying there, I'm talking a week or two.
Yeah.
Once you get past thirty days, you're living there, in my mind.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe we need to update that with days. We might need to.
Yeah.
Be hard to enforce it if it doesn't say a specific time. Don't forget to give your cemetery report.
I've got it over at the office.
Okay, cemetery report, had one burial and nine graves sold.
Tell you to rest at nine cremations.
We're gonna have to discuss soon about selling some plots there in our addition we have off of. Park Street. Plus we're running out of, of space.
Yeah, I did some quick counts and I came up with like sixteen maybe in D and maybe thirteen in C.
Yeah.
Much won't get us through the next year or so. Yeah, we definitely need to.
This just does, this, all this ordinance says is. Travel trailers not mobile homes, a travel trailer or camper type trailer is not to be considered to be a mobile home and may not be. And may be stored in the rear yard or any, any occupied dwelling, no permit shall be required. A travel trailer when so stored may not be used as a residence.
So, no time for it.
And it says there is a penalty on here. Any person or persons violating any of the provisions of this article shall be fined not less than twenty-five dollars nor more than fifty dollars for each offense. A separate offense shall be committed on each day, so you mean, I guess you could start fining someone on our ordinance fifty dollars a day. But how do you, I don't know how you enforce it when it doesn't say how long you're able to. That's the problem. Stay in it.
Right.
It says there's no time, you can't stay in it at all.
Can't stay in it at all.
So.
I guess. And I think this town has always been kind, like, and if somebody was, you know, visiting.
Then the other part is.
Right.
The other part of, is my burden of proof is proving they're actually living in there.
Right.
Just because they're, they can say, well, just cuz we got an electric cord running through it, don't mean we're living in it.
Right.
That's.
I don't know.
Where I get bound up with the law sometimes.
I'll have Scott examine that ordinance too.
That's the thing, is a lot of people do, you know, like mine, I got electric on mine right now, but I don't live in it, I mean, people do it all year.
Right.
Mine's plugged in.
Rather than drain everything and.
So did we do the police report?
So you, we had one burial and sold eight.
Nine graves.
Nine.
And we talked about properties and your court treasure.
Have you guys all looked at the sidewalks? How's everybody feeling about the sidewalks?
With the six inch thing.
It looked like he went back. They did, Jase can clarify on that.
I went back, I come in Monday, um, Carol called me asking about it.
Yeah.
Everywhere they had cut out to replace what had cracked, I measured, it is four inches. Um, your sides might not be exactly four, but they're within three and a half, two four. Everywhere I measured in the center to, you know, a third in each direction was four inches.
So it is bellied in. The driveways though, the driveways.
So it was the underbelly of the driveway.
So the only driveway I was able to actually measure, and I went off their form boards was. Larry Jenkins.
Larry Jenkins, mm-hmm.
Um, they were at seven inches on the form board.
So they're cutting out the sides and then giving it a dip instead of eight inches down and. Just doing it that way there, doing a six inch board or seven inch board and then doing a dip. So it's rounded.
Well, I, that's how I do it, but.
Well.
I haven't actually gone and measured nothings, I just heard.
Yeah, I, I had to go look and.
But your, your two by fours three and a half inches, so your, your, all your sides on all your sidewalk will be three and a half inches. Um, but it's what you can't see and me being able to measure what was cut out. Gave me the answer I, I was looking for, which is four inches.
You mean six inches on the.
So after research, we found it's fine, it's what it is.
Who does the backfill on that?
Some clarification on that.
He does the backfill on it.
He's gonna do all of it?
Yeah, he's done already.
I thought they were. I didn't see anybody.
No, he said they would be, I think he said they would be back tomorrow.
So I'm, yeah.
I, I think.
On the south side, when I came in town, it didn't look like it was done, I mean, you could see all the honeycombs and.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's kinda where you and I went and looked from there all the way down to the next room.
Gonna do that, he was waiting, I don't know what he was waiting on, maybe the load of dirt to do it.
Okay. No, cuz where him and I were at.
We spoke about it yesterday. And then some of the backfill has been done by property owners.
Yeah, yeah, he was out across from my house with a bunch of dirt yesterday, is that what you're talking about?
Well, they, they did do some cleanup Monday, they came in, cleaned up the mess they had on North Main. Um, and then. I, I do know they will be taking most of the rest of the week to finish pouring what needed, pour people's walkway that was broken. Um, and cleaning up and backfilling.
Yeah, I think he's repoured on down there, he repoured all the cracked pieces.
There was quite a few when I came in, the last two days.
Yeah, he pulled three sections, three sections of sidewalk and one driveway. Um, and repoured.
What made it crack? Just the weather?
He said when you're pouring, pouring three hundred feet, he said it, it's hard to keep up with. So if they don't get their cuts made in time. Is what he explained it, which it does make sense cuz I, when I walked it, there is some spots where they cut the distress cut. That's what it's called.
Control joints, yeah.
And it already cracked at the stress cut, you could see, so it's doing what it's supposed to do.
Here's a sad note, I walk that, every day, everybody knows that, but there are feet print in the new sidewalk.
Uh, that just kinda come with it, I mean, you can only ask people to stay off of it. You can't stay there all night to make sure.
Deep enough to make feet print in it, two different sections.
In the, is it in the repour parts?
Yep.
Yeah, I guess we could put a cone or something, I don't know. Um, the sum total for everything that he's done and will do is thirty-five thousand nine seventy-five. Um, he's asked Carol for a payment. I did not put this on your bills, I received this later, um, but I can make a payment to him if you guys all agree. Tomorrow or whenever he's gonna be back, is it tomorrow? I can't remember, um. The sidewalks are, I think they look great, that's just my personal opinion, just walking down there and measuring with Barb the other day, I was just like, this is so nice to be able to walk. Down this sidewalk, I just think if I had a baby or the baby trailer, you know, all those things, like it'd be so nice. So.
They are, they're really nice.
Total cost for us is thirty-five nine seventy-five.
The total cost is outstanding, right?
Yes.
It feels fifty-three something.
Paying all but ten percent.
It's fifty.
Well, that was with.
Fifty-nine was with Mark's part, with the trail association's part, so yeah.
And what did we allot for?
So I allotted the rest of the ARP money for this and. ARP money, we have left a cash balance and ARP of thirty-nine thousand three sixty-two twelve. So we have enough to cover this full bill. And we have enough to get, to cover Gary's bill because we paid for moving the hydrants. So Gary's bill is twenty-five hundred dollars to move the two hydrants and then I'll send that bill to Mark as a community match to his project. So, but we'll have enough to pay for, cuz I didn't really wanna pay for those hydrants out of water, since water's, um, it's good buildup right now. So I can pay Gary's bill and that bill out of this.
What kind of payment did he ask? He was just wanting a payment or is he wanting a full payment or?
He wants all but ten percent.
I was gonna say, cuz that was, that's what I was gonna propose, was everything but ten percent, just do a ten percent retainage.
Yeah, ten percent retained.
He's just got that north end to pour.
Yeah.
Or that tree stump's gonna come out.
We'll have to pay lock rate to take that tree stump out too.
I did get the quote for that, it's two hundred dollars.
Okay, yeah, so that's, we can use.
That can be used out of that too.
Yes, so.
I'll make a motion.
We probably also have a thousand dollars for their tractor out of that too. Good old ARP buddy.
Go ahead, Ken.
I was gonna say, I'll make a motion to pay the full amount less the ten percent retainage because he's substantial complete.
I'll second that.
I think Barb already seconded it.
Okay.
I mean, I just think they're so nice, you guys.
They are, they are.
And.
I wish we could do, you know.
Well, now that we've done them and we know what his pricing is, which I've heard that fluctuates from time to time, perhaps we can set aside money. In the coming years with our edit money, we do have that big chunk of edit money, um. We have, let's see, our, we have fifty-seven thousand dollars in edit money. And we use that typically, what we've used it for is I, I pay the police car payment, will the truck and police car lease payment. Loan payment comes out of that twice a year, um, that's like thirty-five hundred bucks, so that's seven thousand dollars a year, um. And then we've used it for community crossings match, but that, that money accumulates, we get thirteen hundred dollars a month. That's our twenty twenty-four and it'll go up a little bit in twenty twenty-five, so we have a nice chunk there, so we could always say. We're going to put this much money aside to add onto some sidewalks, X number of dollars and figure out our footage and some places that could really use them, so.
One thing I will also mention, because on the sidewalk there in front of the civic center meeting. Main and Central, was there not supposed to be an ADA?
There is one.
Okay, he's gonna put an ADA.
I thought there was one already there.
There is a rumbles.
Little bubble thing that, yeah.
Okay.
Detectible warning surface, that's what they're called. Alright, so did you take your vote on your payment? Yes, everybody?
Yes, it was Ken and Barb. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
One other thing on properties before we get to, I've already talked to you Natalie, um. And Mark, I think I've talked to you the day I seen you out there, the first day that they were starting to pour. Um, is because technically now all along Main Street in front of post office and. The building across from Firehouse, they do have several like things out there on the. Sidewalk, which is now the trail, that we're gonna eventually have to talk to them and say, hey. This gotta come off cuz it's now trail.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else particularly, I mean, you guys, I've been just busy here.
Really? Any other, John, do you have anything to add about?
No, I'll come back next month and maybe have a decision.
We probably.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at it.
Have something even before then, Natalie will just let you know.
Did you guys pay to have that tree removed?
Yes, and you need that too.
That needs, any, any work that you did on that side of Main Street.
Let me post it note that, Mark, cuz I forgot to send you that one.
Anything that you did, then that, yeah.
So, I'll, I'll send you Gary's bill.
Thank you.
And that bill.
Okay, cool.
Do you need like my check stubs or anything to show they see that?
No, I think just an invoice from the town that says.
Okay.
This is what the cost was to do these items.
Okay, I can do that. Okay. Right, perfect.
I'll make a motion to pay the bill.
Oh, yeah.
Cody.
How many times? All in favor?
All, fine.
We're closing out.
Closing the bills, thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Okay.